Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
Councilmember Roach.
He is here.
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 And Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
All right, looks like we have two agenda modifications. We have an agenda modification to add a proclamation to the agenda and to add a second executive session. Do we have a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Second, okay. All approved of the, all who approve of the agenda modification for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, it has been approved, so now we will move to our proclamation. Whereas in 1850, the first settlers arrived in the Bonny Lake area, and they traveled across the Natchez Trail following paths made by Native American tribes on their east-west crossing, a route that closely parallels today's old Sumner Buckley Highway. And whereas, it wasn't until 1946 that Bonny Lake was established as a town, and whereas until 1946, there was no electricity or water available. The Simmons family was driving, was the driving force for development and incorporation, which, with Kenneth Simmons serving three terms as Bonny Lake's first mayor. And whereas, the city of Bonny Lake officially incorporated on February 28, 1949. And whereas, by 1950, the new city had streets, a water system, electricity, telephone lines, refuse disposal, and a blood bank. And whereas, since incorporating, the city has expanded from a thousand-acre parcel with approximately 327 residents to 8.15 square miles with more than 23,000 residents. And whereas, Bonny Lake is a residential suburban community with lakes, mountain views, excellent schools, a local library, a vast range of businesses, desirable neighborhoods, and an exceptional, and exceptional recreational activities. And whereas, the 75th anniversary is an appropriate time to commemorate Bonny Lake's history and invite the community to participate in planned activities throughout this year. And now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the City of Bonny Lake, Washington, do hereby proclaim February 28, 2024, as the Bonny Lake 75th Anniversary of Incorporation. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Bonny Lake, of the city of Bonny Lake to be affixed on this 27th day of February. All right. I will add the excellent city council to that. Thanks. And what happened to the blood bank? Do we know?
Yeah, that's a weird one, huh?
All right, we have public hearings and, oh, well, seeing that we, there is no public hearing, we'll go on to citizen comments. All right, citizens, this is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. Everybody will have five minutes, and when you approach the days, bar dais, please state your name and address for the record.
Council Mayor, I'm Dan Decker, up to 470 Street, Bonny Lake, Washington. And February 28th, the city of Bonny Lake will be 75 years old. I've been here for over 60 of those years. All I can say is, happy birthday. It appears some of the staff has been drinking Bonny Lake Tacoma water, or is it just my imagination that city, county, state, and federal laws are being violated within the city of Bonny Lake government? I'm not referring, not referring to any council person in this or any below statements that I'm going to make. Although I'm referring to, I'm referring to have taken an oath to uphold and protect all of the above-mentioned laws, just so those I'm referring to understand the council and the people of the city are not stupid. Strongly suggests that the violations of your oath stop. You have been noticed, you have been given notice. Remember, one important thought. When government officials violate their oath of office, it means they have lost their immunity as government employees. As the council understands, the federal constitution and all parts thereof is the supreme law of the land. If by way of any violation, any act created in violation of the constitution is with no redress, it's null and it's void, as any law that is made in violation of the constitution, the federal constitution. Please, those of you that don't know the federal constitution and its understanding, I strongly suggest that you start reading it, because me personally and others are starting to wonder what this country is. Adolf Hitler believed to be the good guy in Germany back then. He thought he was anyway. In 1944, when things looked badly for his evil self, he said to his secretary, "Things might look..." "Things might look bleak right now, but we must believe that good will triumph." Think, well, good did triumph, maybe. Or did Hitler's comprehensive plan end up in the Bonny Lake in the year 2024? Adolf Hitler thought that everything he was doing was good and wonderful. Well, if y'all read the comprehensive plan, you'll find out that it comes right out of Adolf Hitler's book of strategies and ways to destroy a country. Read it, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. You're not even allowed to even say anything bad about it, or you end up in prison, or somebody will come along and kill you. That's really more truthful than not. Comprehensive plan is nothing but a takeover of this government, this country, by fascist New World Order Communist Nazis. If you don't think so, continue to do what they want, and they will, in the end, destroy you and everything you own. Thank you very much, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, well, now we will start with those that are virtual. Anybody who is virtual and wishes to speak, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Okay, looks like nobody will be speaking virtual, so now we will disable all video and microphones for those who are attending virtually. We have no correspondence, so we'll move to committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met today upstairs at 5 o'clock. We had a, we approved our minutes, we had a personnel update. We had a discussion on the rec program, which, some really good news, actually. We were notified that Alex and David met with Lori Dent, and that there was, she was open to a possible ILA in the future. And so there's, would go before the board potentially in April. So that could possibly be a one or more-year ILA potentially. So there'll be more talks on that in the future, but the discussions have started, and so that's a huge positive, and we're very excited about that.
Absolutely.
We had a open discussion in regards to council cell phones. It was something I brought up with the whole issue of PDRs and things that are coming potentially. I think it's an easy way to just delineate council's work separate from your private life and whatnot. So it's, there'll be a poll coming out, they'll be talking to you if you want one or whatnot in the future. And then we had a very robust discussion about code enforcement and the code enforcement officers that was added. And we'll be talking, it was just a robust discussion, I'll just leave it at that. More than welcome to talk to us about it later. And that was our meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We all know what robust means, but I'm glad, and I don't see any black eyes or...
There'll be another council meeting in two weeks upstairs, and the public is invited.
Okay, can we move to Community Development Committee, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a little, a short little meeting, we had a couple of open discussion. We didn't have any items that we moved forward. We did, however, discuss some longer-range items, you know, mainly to deal with the Midtown Park issues over there to try to figure out, you know, future, like, long-term, not next year, not five, you know, longer-term, 25, 50, for stormwater site issues. If there's a possibility, maybe technology in the future, or different ways to use the storm systems over there, so that, you know, people are aware, it takes up quite a bit of the property, you know, so set it up for the future, move it, do it in a different way possibly. Also, same kind of issue with, like, tree coverage issues, you know, maintaining the tree canopy, different creative ways to do that, so that we don't, you know, even if we have to cut down some trees here, that there's some trees over there, but I'm sure everybody's aware, a lot of moving parts over there, good discussion around that. I think some of the evens, like, the pool issue came up with the school district and how that's, you know, in White River, and maybe the pool might be better off in the parks plan over here at the library area, or how we move all those pieces around. So just mainly discussion at committee level, and that was the issues of the night.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. All right, can we hear from Public Safety Committee, please?
We last met the day before Valentine's Day, and so our next meeting is going to be March 12th on the second floor at 3:30 PM. Here in the Justice Center, the public is invited.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. And I don't see any other reports. We now are moving to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
All in favor of adopting the consent agenda for the city of Bonny Lake for February 27, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is a massively short consent agenda now. All right, let it be known that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously. Now, we have three public safety and two full council issues. Adam A.? Adam Clerk?
This is AB 2414, ordinance D 2414. The council motion would be to amend the following animals at large sections of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code, 6.04190, allowing animal services to enforce the code on public as well as private property. 6.04230, setting guidelines for the options of lowering violation fees, providing for severability and corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Roach, do you have any discussion?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
No, that one was, we had lots of discussion. It was, yeah.
Was it a robust discussion? All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, we, yes, had a robust discussion regarding this. And love the items in red that were added. I just want to thank our prosecutor, Deirdre, for working through some of our concerns. And I read through the section in red, and everything is looking pretty good. And so I just wanted to thank her for working with us in that arena.
All right, thank Councilmember Baldwin. Do we have any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Okay, all in favor of ordinance D 2414, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that would be unanimously. I heard a little aye from Councilmember Roach right as it was coming along. All right, next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2416, ordinance D 2416. The council motion would be to amend Section 10.33.010 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code to include illegal racing conduct and vehicle impoundment and forfeiture, providing for severability and corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, I barely heard a second. Was that the Councilmember Hubler? Oh, yes, good. Okay, do we have any discussion on the matter? Okay. And Councilmember Roach, I'm assuming you don't. I'll just let that know since you're not physically present here. But anyway, we're ready to move to the vote. All in favor of ordinance D 2416, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I believe that is a unanimous consent as well. All right, Madam Clerk, to the next ordinance.
This is AB 2417, ordinance D 2417. The council motion would be to amend Section 14.130.040 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code to increase the severity of criminal interference with code enforcement, providing for severability and corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Do I hear a motion? All right, do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Fullerton.
Okay, so we're talking about D, Section D, and it says, "Any person who intentionally intimidates, obstructs, impedes, or interferes with any lawful attempt to serve a notice of violation, stop-work order, or emergency order, or intentionally obstructs, impedes, or interferes with lawful attempts to correct a violation, shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor." So a misdemeanor is 90-day, possible 90 days in jail and a fine of $1,000, which I think is pretty steep. But now we're adding a gross onto that, which is 364 days plus a $5,000 fine. For, and this seems quite, it's not very specific for me, so when you're saying intimidates, obstructs, impedes, interfere, I don't see any physical vi, any physical harm being done with that. So if you're talking about pushing, shoving, taking somebody's, a code enforcement officer's hammer out of their hand and stopping them, I think it needs to be extremely specific on what we're going to call a gross misdemeanor. It seems extremely harsh, because you're talking, if somebody's got a code violation, that means they're a homeowner, and that means that they're probably doing something, and most likely, they weren't even in, knowing that they had a permit violation. So of course, you're going to be shocked if you have somebody show up at your door and put a notice on your, on your door. I would be very upset. I'd be like, excuse me, what did I do wrong? Why are you picking on me? I mean, me personally, I own a home here, and I would be very offended if somebody put something on my door and I didn't know that that was coming. So to put me in jail and prevent me from being able to work so that I could pay my, my fee of $1,000, but even to put me in jail for 90 days for a misdemeanor, it, they both seem quite harsh, so I think that the wording, I mean, what is obstructed, what is impede, what is interfere, you know? I can see that, that council would like to have a conversation with me, but I'm interfering with your ability to have a conversation with me right now, because I'm not stopping to let you talk. So do I get to get a gross misdemeanor for that, or, you know?
And, yeah, Councilmember Fullerton, I can tell you, at least that particular provision is based on the revised Code of Washington's gross misdemeanor of simple harassment. The wording that is in there does reflect the RCW as far as the, as far as the harassing behavior is concerned. And yes, it would be specific as far as what needs to be put out in any sort of citation that would be put in there and then adjudicated. Now I'll turn it over to our prosecutor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is the microphone on? Because I can, okay.
Where's Chuck when you need him?
Testing. Oh.
The microphone is obstructing with our, our meeting. There it goes.
All right, it even happens to Taylor Swift during the air. All right, so Councilmember Fullerton, I, I agree with you that a gross misdemeanor is really severe. 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine hanging over someone's head is a lot. But I think realistically, when a person is charged with a crime like this, most of the time, they do not serve all 364 days in jail. A lot of times, people enter into some sort of stipulated order of continuance or a deferred sentence, where that jail time, the bulk of it, is hanging over their head. And so it's encouragement for them to, you know, work with the code enforcement officers, not interfere with their job, and to fix whatever needs to be fixed, you know, whether it's hoarding of stuff, or an unsafe deck, or whatever it is that needs to be fixed. We're doing this because we are really ramping up our code enforcement program, which really helps with keeping Bonny Lake safe. And so this is a way to make sure that those code enforcement officers are safe when they're out there and doing their job, so...
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Madam Prosecutor, could you elaborate to the council and the public why this was addressed in the first place? Why did we have to look to kind of increase the the punitives from a simple misdemeanor up to a gross misdemeanor? What was happening in the city?
Well, we've, we now have two code enforcement officers, so they're going out there, and they may have to, you know, serve a stop-work order notice. They may have to end up engaging with the public in some way, and this isn't just, you know, they are really well-trained on how to handle a person who's upset that they've gotten a stop-work order, but this is for the person who's actually, you know, they're nailing the stake in the ground, and the person's actually, like, ripping the hammer out of their hand to stop them from doing their job. And so as we increase this program, that's going to really help Bonny Lake be a great city and be a, you know, safe city, and, you know, an aesthetically pleasing city, we need to make sure that these code enforcement officers are protected and that the public knows, hey, this, we're not messing around, this is a serious crime.
Okay, and Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, so are the code enforcement officers going to be wearing body cameras like the police officers in order to prove that something happened, or is this, do we have witnesses? Is this a he-said, she-said? Do we have two code enforcement officers showing up at the same time? Because, you know, I could be offended. I could say that, yeah, you know, you hurt my, you broke my fingernail when you, when you pulled that hammer out of my hand, and, you know, but you really didn't even touch me. So how do I, how do I prove my innocence if I didn't touch somebody, and they're saying that I did? And now I have police knocking on my door because the code enforcement officer said that I attacked them?
So to answer your question, no, they do not have body-worn camera for establishing witnesses. They're, the code enforcement officer themselves would be a witness. If there's two of them at the scene, there'd be more than one. So that would be enough, you know, their testimony is the evidence that we would present at trial.
And please explain the presumption of innocence.
Yes, yeah.
You do not have to prove your innocence in any of these criminal cases.
Right, yeah, absolutely. You know, once there, the crime is charged, the homeowner, the defendant would not have to testify. The city would have the burden of beyond a reasonable doubt of proving that the crime happened.
And that would go before at least six members of our public who would be impaneled as a jury?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
But it also says that the citizen will be charged with paying attorney fees and fines and any, as well as fixing whatever the, the damage, the, the permit is for. It seems like kind of an attack on the citizenship. I have to assume innocence.
So if they're, if they're indigent, if they, they fill out a financial screening form, and if they are below a certain poverty level, they do not have to pay for their private, their defense attorney.
I can guarantee you that I would not fit within those qualifications. I, I work, my husband works. But we do live paycheck to paycheck sometimes, and this would create a massive hardship for me. But I can tell you, I cannot get discounts on college because of my income. So how am I going to get a discount if I am charged with a crime? And I'm, now I'm going to go to jail, now I can't pay for anything. So, I mean, I have to, I feel like right now, if I'm, if I'm going to court, and it's up to you to prove, the city, to prove that they are within the qualifications of a gross misdemeanor on my beha, on my behalf, I feel like I'm, I'm already being told I'm guilty, because I'm going to court now. So I'm being told I'm guilty, and, and I'm going to be paying for fines. I'm going to be paying for permits now. I'm going to be paying for, for compliance for those permits. And, and then hopefully, you know, if I can, if I even have the ability to defend myself without a lawyer, I won't be going to jail, and I might only have to pay a $5,000 fine. So I, I'm just saying, like, gross misdemeanor. I think misdemeanor is bad enough. I think that's a pretty good fine. It's going to stop most people from, from doing something. If it's a $1,000 fine, if, if the code enforcement officer says to me, "Mrs. Fullerton, if you, if you don't, if you take this out of my hand, or if you stop me from posting this sign, you are possibly going to be fined $1,000 and 90 days in jail," I'm going to step back, and I'm going to be like, okay, well, I'm going to call the police then, because I need a witness that, that I'm upset here. But that's going to cause me to stop. I don't, I don't have an extra $1,000. I don't have 90 days to spend in jail. I don't have that much vacation time, so...
Councilmember Fullerton, I think the, the average citizen in Bonny Lake would stop right there. Like you said, if the code enforcement officer says, "If you interfere with me, you know, I'm going to have to call the police." You might be faced with a charge of a crime. We're going after that, that really small percentage that is beyond just the normal upset that a code enforcement officer said, "Hey, this, this addition you put on your house wasn't permitted," or "You have this container that's, you're storing in the right-of-way." The people that respond extra beyond the pale. And part of this is also protecting staff, because when our Bonny Lake staff are out there representing the city, they deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, because they're doing a service to the citizens. And so this is a ordinance that would, by upping it to a gross misdemeanor, ensures that they're protected while they're out there doing their job for the city. Mayor?
Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm just talking with the council in regards to some thoughts that we had during this conversation. Councilmember Fullerton, you definitely hit it on the head, like, that's exactly what our concerns were when we were talking about this in public safety. Even with everything that has been said, we are not supporters of assault and battery and things like that, and people should absolutely have consequences when, you know, they put their hands on somebody else or make threats that they're going to do so. I think what bothered us at public safety is just the mere wording is vague. And so lots of things could be considered intimidation, impeding someone's ability to do something, interfering with somebody. And for me, I know I didn't feel comfortable allowing, you know, giving the government a vague description of what they can then do to then cause somebody to go to jail for a year and have a $5,000 fine. I understand that there are incidences when people are, you know, making threats of physical violence and then committing that, but that is assault and battery. And so, you know, I, I understand protecting people, and I know that in talking with the code enforcement officers, they do have to approach private property, you know, and they, they make sure that they don't go on to private property, and they're at the edge, you know, but I, I think one of the incidences, I, you know, just kind of a hypothetical incident, if, if somebody were, you know, doing a job, and, and jobs are stressful, and they cost lots of money, and some, when someone comes on to the property, I just recently had somebody who had code enforcement come on to the property, not on to the property, you know, but at the edge of the property, and not a lot was said even in those moments. And they were very stressed out, and people easily, when you're messing with their money, get very agitated. And so I can see somebody, you know, yelling while standing on their property at a code enforcement officer and things like that. But again, like, we're not supporting assault and battery, it's just the wording is vague. And I'm just...
And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with this.
And just to elaborate on that, if anybody was actually physically touched in any, any sort of way, it becomes a different scenario to where you would be looking at either assault or, or just plain assault, or as, as our municipal code says when it comes to it. The one thing that I think needs to be explained, again, to the, to the council and the public, that when, when the old joke, you know, you go into law school saying yes or no, and you come out saying it depends, there actually is a lot of weight behind that. It really does depend on each and every single case that comes along. And the process that would happen here is that code enforcement officer would write a incident report, or if the police were called, the police would write an incident report and submit it to our prosecuting attorney's office. They would look it over to see whether it should even be charged or not. They may have questions about the investigation, they, before they do so. But it goes through a multi-layered process. It's not like you are automatically given 364 days and a $5,000 fine. And in fact, in my 20-plus career of doing, of practicing criminal law, I think I've seen one case in the thousands of cases that I've had that might have had, that might have had that. And they were completely aggravating circumstances that, that caused that. It's, this is simply amending our code to put it to a gross misdemeanor because it, I believe we've, for the safety of our code enforcement officers, because there have been practical incidents where our code enforcement officers have been in danger. And giving, giving, so we're not foregoing anybody's bill of rights or Sixth Amendment right to a trial, or even, even Fourth Amendment or anything along those lines, or your right to representation. We are, it's going to go by the criminal procedure that, that has been established. Isn't that correct, Ms. Burke?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
He had to.
Councilmember McLemons.
How many times has the city prosecuted somebody for this section?
Zero.
I'm wondering.
Because it depends. It depends on every factual situation that comes along. Because we've had situation, okay, okay. If you wish to speak, you can come up too, and we will allow you to give your, your five minutes. You have to give your name and your address. Are you willing to do that, sir?
It's public.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, yeah, you're, and you're right. I believe our citizen commentary time has, has been passed. But one of the reasons for this is, again.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Right, I, I think this is a council discussion. So can we keep this, I respectfully ask to keep this as a council discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember McLemons. You are absolutely right. I, I get on these sorts of subjects and do transcend the rules. My, again, my, sometimes my passion takes over from my logic, and I am sorry for that. So do we have any further discussion on the ordinance before we take it to a vote? Okay, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's too vague. I need to know why this person is, is going to have a gross demeanor. I mean, it, because to me, you're the giant. If I'm the little person in the pond, I'm the little guppy. You are the big bird flying in trying to eat me. And so I see this as a personal attack. I, I can't, I can't justify a gross misdemeanor unless it's like actual assault. If, if it says something in here that says assault, and then you're telling me there's codes and RCWs and, and, you know, revised code and all that stuff, but I don't see that on this exact bill or this ordinance. There is no reference to Bonnie Lake Municipal Code. There's no reference to Washington State Constitution, and there's no reference to the RCWs. So I don't see anything here that would justify a gross misdemeanor.
And Mr. Sullivan, if you, do you want to address something?
I was just saying, we, I've been talking with, with the prosecutor, and we have no problem going back and working on language. We agree that, you know,
Okay.
vagueness is not a good thing in any standard.
So, oh, and Councilmember.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Any governmental standard vagueness is not a good, you know, a good standard to use. We totally agree with that. So I will say, though, that that standard's in there. We haven't, I guess the fear that has come from reading those words, we have never had to use those words. But we have no problem going back and sharpening the pencils and trying to create specificity. That's what these conversations are for. And, you know, we agree that you shouldn't have, I always say vague standards in government are not good standards because it doesn't provide clear direction to anybody. So we have no problem going back and working on, with the prosecutor's office. Sorry, Dean, I.
And Councilmember McLemons.
So I would like to move that we table this discussion for a council workshop.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the matter before we take to a vote? All right, all in favor of tabling AB 2417, ordinance 2417, say aye.
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 Do I hear any, any opposed? All right, so motion or ordinance AB 2417 is tabled by unanimous vote. All right, next issue, Madam Clerk. You can take my mic, Madam Clerk. Believe me, my voice is loud enough.
This is AB 2418, Resolution 3199. The council motion would be to authorize a $25,000 hiring bonus for lateral police officers in 2024.
Do I hear a motion?
Moved. Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the matter? Oh, Councilmember McLemons.
Good idea. Thank you.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
All right, are we, oh, and Councilmember Hubler.
I, I was actually going to say, like, just so that everybody knows, it was, it's, it's less expensive for us to hire a lateral police officer, give them bonus than it is to hire a brand-new police officer. Now, please don't get me wrong, I love new police officers. Good friend of mine, her daughter was just sworn in and finished police academy today for a different city, and I think that's amazing when a young person wants to go on and do that. But this is already within Chief Berry's budget. It doesn't cost us extra money. He is actually saving us money in the long run. So it would be in our benefit as a city to try to bring in some really good police officers from other areas.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hubler. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I also want to thank Chief Berry in just being very economical. Appreciate that. Love lateral officers. I think that lateral officers, the best thing about them is they already know the job, and we know that they're not going to try to leave the job because they know the hardships of the job. Whereas if you have someone who's new and they're going through probation, a lot of times, they don't really know the job until they're on the job. And then they make, may make different decisions, and then we've spent a lot of money, you know, towards them. So anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it sounds like an excellent idea. I agree too. And this was, what, the Finance Committee dealt with this or something? Yeah, yeah.
I thought Community Development.
Yeah, we passed on this issue at Community Development. So for clarity, though, for to make sure the public understands it, right? Because I've, you know, it's clearly, we'll save the city a lot of money if we're able to get lateral officers. But if I'm a citizen, I'm like, well, why, right? Because my take on it is the training aspect of it and the time to actually be on the job, right? So that's what the key factor to a lateral officer is. They can be, again, my understanding, on the job sooner as, yeah. Can the chief fill us in on why this is a great idea, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely. For example, this Friday, on March 1st, we have two entry-level officers beginning their employment with us. They will not hit the street by themselves handling calls for citizens until March 1 of 2025. If we were to hire lateral officers on March 1 of 2024, they would be on the streets serving citizens by June 1 of 2024. So it saves nine months of training where you're paying them the same salary without the services to the citizens.
And chief, without getting into the actual number, does, the bonus that we're offering, is that comparable to our surrounding cities in our area?
Exactly. It's based off what we're seeing throughout the region. It's actually still kind of low, but we offer a really great work environment and community support, and that's very desirable.
You weren't supposed to say low. All right, so any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Roach.
Oh, Councilmember Roach, yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm trying to figure the, the hand button, but I can't find it. On to that as well. I think everything was covered there, but I wanted to note, too, that I, I talked to the chief after our little meeting there, and there is a phase-in part of that as well. So we don't have the worry of a lateral comes over, takes the bonus, and then leaves. But they've got to stay. I don't know what the time requirements were. I mean, chief can fill us in, but it's basically a safety valve there to where we're not going to have people take advantage of and then leave.
Yeah, so the phase-in, thank you, Councilmember. The phase-in is the 10,000 a pound higher than 10,000 a pound completing their probationary year, and then 5,000 at the 18-year mark, which is actually longer than most.
You mean 18 months or?
18 months, yeah.
Oh, my word. I was.
Yeah, sorry.
Years?
Pretty harsh, chief.
Like, you can take the 5,000.
Okay, do we have any further discussion before we take it to a vote? All right, all in favor of motion M 2419, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, looks like motion M 2419 has been, has been approved unanimously. So now we will adjourn the regular city.
Oh, no, that was Resolution 3199.
I jumped the gun again.
AB 2418, Mayor.
3199, my, again, my mistake. It has been a long day. Yes, so let's move on to our next item, AB 2419, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2419, motion M 2419. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a labor agreement with the police guild representing the non-commissioned employees from January 1 of 2024 through December 31 of 2026.
Do I hear motions?
I'll move.
Okay.
Any discussion? Councilmember Roach?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I believe we're ready to take it to a vote then. All in favor of, again, at the risk of repeating myself, all in favor of motion M 2419, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now I believe motion M 2419 has been approved unanimously. Okay, so now we'll return to regular council meeting. Go into an executive session first for 20 minutes for RCW 42.30.110C to discuss real estate with no action to follow, and then for 10 minutes per RCW 4231.110I to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel. So we are adjourned. Very much, everybody.